The city of Campbell is no longer requiring face coverings be worn inside city facilities. However, all are welcome to wear a face covering should that make you feel more comfortable. Should health directives from the county of Santa Clara or the Centers for Disease Control change, the city will comply. So I'll call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. The city council meeting is live streamed on channel 26, channel 88, the city's website and on YouTube. If any, I'd comment if anybody's watching from Zoom or YouTube. It's a little darker up here. We're trying to save some energy and keep it a little cooler. So work with us, please, or understand. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons. Councilmember Lopez. Councilwoman Landry.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bybee.
Present.
Mayor Resnikoff.
Here. If you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, equal and just.
Thank you. Go to special presentation of proclamations. There are none communications petitions. There are none. City Attorney, I don't think we have anything to report out.
We do not.
Thank you. But oral request, this is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. You will have two minutes to do so, to have anybody interested in speaking on an item not on the agenda.
We do not.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to council announcements. City Hall is open to the public for in-person services Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. For your convenience, online services including permits, business license applications and virtual appointments are available online. Visit the city's website at campbellca.gov to view information for all city departments and services available. Please join me at the annual state of the city address on September 22. I'll be discussing the city's recent accomplishments, our resilience during and after COVID and information on upcoming projects, including Measure O. State of the City address will be held at the Orchard City Banquet Hall on Thursday, September 22. Doors open at 5:30 PM with the event beginning promptly at 6:00. Please RSVP to mayor state of the city at campbellca.gov by Monday, September 19. The Los Gatos Veterans Memorial and Support Foundation, with the support of the Campbell Veterans Foundation, is hosting American Challenge Lessons from 9/11 on Sunday, September 11th from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM at the Flame of Liberty Memorial at 110 East Main Street in Los Gatos. This is an opportunity to honor two hometown 9/11 heroes and to thank first responders and US military members who answered the call. For more information, please visit lessonsfrom911.org. City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for various boards and commissions. To find out more about these positions or to apply, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 408-866-2117 or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. The 12th Annual Caregivers Count Conference is a free virtual conference for families and friends caring for an older adult. This year's conference is a four-part series virtual event. The dates are September 10, 17, 24 and October 1st from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Topics include self-care, strategies for dementia caregiving, long-term care and fall prevention and home safety. The conference is free and the registration is available at caregiverscount.net. And finally, live music is coming back to the Ainsley House this fall with a series of four concerts and talented musicians. Fall Garden concerts begin September and run through November. Latin Heat will perform September 8th followed by Tony Lindsay on October 23rd and Brian Ho on November 13th. Registration is required. For more information, please visit campbellmuseums.com. We're now move to the consent calendar. This is items one through nine and items can be taken as a whole unless somebody would like to pull an item. We have a request to speak on item six, so that one's going to be pulled. And we also have requests, I think, to pull item nine.
Yes, that's correct.
Any others? So is there a motion for items one through five, seven and eight?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Councilwoman Landry. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
Mayor Resnikoff.
All right, so thank you. So we have a card here from John Richards for item six coming up. Before you speak though, I'm going to recuse myself on this item because that has to do with Measure O and I've been recusing because in the proximity of my house to the parcel with police stations. I'm going to step out. Vice Mayor will handle this item and I'll come back for item nine.
So for members of the public, this item is to receive a post issuance summary on 2022 Museum O bond sale. And we have one speaker on this item, John Richards.
John Richards, 423 East Latimer, number two. Just one very quick question. What is a post issuance summary for the bonds and how does that relate to Measure O?
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak?
There's not.
And Director Fuentes, would you like to respond?
I can, I can, yes. Um, so the report, um, the report on the council agenda is on just to give the, just to give all the details of the bonds that, that, that were, that were sold in June. They, they, they were up to a thirty million amount. And, and so that's a report, just a give the details about the term, rate, what, what, what we are expected to pay, what we're expected to pay in debt costs. Um, and so it's, um, there's, there's not, there's not a thing, a thing for a council to approve. It's just to arrest, just to receive an update, to get the full details of what, of what was sold in the, in the bonds in June. They, they will be, they will be spent upon the products. And the, the amount, the amount that was sold in June, it's, it, 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 it now, it now brings the total amount of bonds sold up to the, the, have to, the fifty, the fifty million dollar amount that was approved through a vote in eighteen.
Thank you. Well, appreciate that. Any members of the council have a question or comment? If not, could we, could I get a motion?
I move item six.
Question?
Second.
I don't think we need a roll call. It's just a.
Yeah, there's nothing to adopt.
So all those in favor.
Voice phone.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried for zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Move to item nine and City Manager, is there a designated for that as well? Okay. But, Vice Mayor.
So I requested, I requested that this item be pulled for discussion on a couple different topics. One has to do with the colors that are being recommended as city colors for the lighting of the water tower on the city's birthday, which is March 28th. And in my perspective and historical knowledge of the city, the city colors have always been red, excuse me, blue and gold. And so I would like to suggest that we change the recommendation from green and white to what I think are is more appropriate as city colors, as blue and gold. So that's the first comment. And then the second comment is since we're amending the policy, I'd like to offer up a suggestion to the council to consider a possible amendment to the, to the policy that would allow or include in the policy that when the mayor and/or his designee declares the lighting of the tower for a special occasion, when it's not, when it's not advantageous to include the council in that decision, that some, the policy states that the city council will be notified and that the city website and social media platforms will be updated appropriately prior to the lighting of the water tower. And one other minor correction on the policy itself. Under that special circumstances, to rephrase the sentence that says, theme lighting for such instances is to last for, will last for one evening and overnight period from sunset to sunrise unless otherwise directed by the, by the mayor and/or his designee. It's just a little clarification there.
Okay.
So those are my suggestions and I'd be willing to discuss.
Okay, before I open to, for just public comment, were there any questions for the what's proposed?
Where'd you get the blue and gold?
The blue and gold historically has been the city colors for many years, dating back to some of our former colleagues, our mayors, our council members. City commission gifts have been designed around the blue and gold theme. Our city flag is blue and gold. And it, it to me is, has been a historical colors rather than the green and white. I'm not sure exactly where that originated from, but I, I believe that blue and gold is the more appropriate colors for, for our city.
I was just mostly curious.
Okay, great. Let's open a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing nobody will bring it back for discussion and/or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes.
I, I would support the recommended changes by Vice Mayor Bybee. And I concur that the colors have been blue and gold and the city flag is blue and gold. So I think that's a, an appropriate clarification. The only other comment I had is, I think the city manager was going to check and see if the lamp replacements was on the CIP this year or whether we held off on it. Because the color, you know, the colors, we had agreed that the colors needed to be better than they've been. So there was a thing to put on it. It was, it was a CIP at one point.
Yours.
Is, is not currently on our CIP list.
It's not on the work plan. Okay.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion. Is there, there was a motion.
So I will make the motion with that.
Motion from Councilmember zero, second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilwoman Landry. We weren't quick enough. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
I just want to really quickly clarify. So your motion is to approve the, the blue and gold.
My motion is to approve all the recommended changes and corrections by Council, Vice Mayor Bybee.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gibbons.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee.
Hi.
Mayor Resnikoff.
All right, thank you very much. Remove to public hearings, introduction of ordinances, new business item 10, consider request for special event permit for Oktoberfest and fee waiver. Our presenter is Chief Berg.
Good evening, Mayor Resnikoff, honorable council members. We're here tonight to discuss the Chamber of Commerce's special event application to hold the Campbell Oktoberfest in downtown Campbell on October 15th and 16th. In accordance with the city's downtown special event policy, all events that require downtown street closures have a significant impact on public facilities or require a significant amount of city staff support are considered special events. And special events held on downtown property are to be coordinated by the city of Campbell and authorized by the city council, which is why we're here this evening. The Chamber's Oktoberfest meets the factors for granting a special events permit and therefore staff recommends issuing the Chamber a special event permit for the Oktoberfest this year in October. To reduce council and staff time incurred with the permitting process, staff is proposing that council consider granting a special event permit for the Oktoberfest for the next five years, allowing future dates to be approved by the police chief and the city manager. This multi-year authorization is consistent with council's previous approval of the Campbell Chamber Boogie Event in 2018. Additionally, with this special event request, the Chamber is requesting a 50% reduction in the costs charged to them by the city or a maximum charge of $25,000, whichever is less, for all costs related to the event. I think it's important to note that in March of 2011, council adopted a fee waiver policy establishing the level of fee waivers for previously approved fundraising events that serve alcohol to be 25% of fees waived and 25% of staff costs waived. One requirement for an organization to receive a fee waiver as specified in the downtown special event waiver fee policy is the sponsoring organization must have no outstanding debts payable to the city of Campbell. The Chamber held its 2022 Boogie Music Festival in May of this year and the city invoiced the Chamber for those services in the amount of $48,649. As of today, the city has not received payment and the due date was July 13, 2022. Staff is not providing a formal recommendation on the Chamber's request for a fee waiver request and we are asking council to provide direction on that. For the financial impact, the total cost for this year's upcoming Oktoberfest is estimated to be, estimated to be about $65,000. And a twenty-five, the standard 25% fee waiver would result in a loss to the city of approximately $16,250. And a 50% fee waiver or a maximum charge of $25,000 would result in about a $40,000 loss to the city. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Lopez?
Thanks, Chief Berg. Could you explain the very last sentence of the report, the fiscal impact? If, if we potentially authorize up to 25,000 for one year, how, how would that impact? How would there be significantly higher losses in future years?
I think the, the purpose of that last sentence was really dealing with the unknowns in the future. So if there are staffing changes based on world events, if there was new equipment that is needed that we're not forecasting for this year, those, those future items wouldn't be covered since the Chamber's request would be a maximum of $25,000 out of pocket. covered since the chamber's request would be a maximum of $25,000 out of pocket. So
So and that's that's a very current festival.
while it's estimated to be $65,000 this year, if in four years, things changed and it was $100,000,
In in a good festival, we can make 150 to 200,000. But that hasn't happened since Oktoberfest of 2019, 2018.
the chamber would still be just paying 25,000 if that 50% or $25,000 cap was authorized.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Isaac, thank you.
And let me follow up and say, I just want to make sure I understand this. So it's the the request is Okay, thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lopez? not 50% or a $25,000 discount. It's 50% with a maximum payment of 25,000. Is it?
Brian, you can, Brian, stop me if if this this gets in and on an agenda, you know, and open to later discussion.
That that's how we understand the request that came from the.
Are we, and and Brian, this may be for you or for Ken, but are
So that's why you said what confused me is you said 25% is 16, 2050.
we on some kind of installment or payment plan? Has there been an agreement reached there?
At 50%, if they pay max of 25, it's a loss of 40.
For for what is owed?
Correct.
Yeah, so there's a promissory note that the chamber signed for the past events
So so it's it's not a 25 discount, it's a 25 cap. And we don't know what future costs are going to be.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? So hang around because there may be more.
that where those invoices have been unpaid. That does not include the 2002, 2022 Boogie event that just happened. That was invoiced for $48,000.
And we're going to open the public hearing. I know Ken Johnson wanted to speak. I think you have a presentation you want to give, so come on up, please, and share that with us.
Thank you.
Okay, and Brian, one more question before before, see if anybody else wants to speak in the public. So if there's money owed for the prior event, how does that impact what we can do with the current event?
There's a good question, and for clarity purposes, our special events fee waiver policy that's in place now, our current policy does require that there's no past due amounts owed to the city to recognize that. If the chamber wants to take advantage of the that fee waiver request, the fee waiver policy that's in place now or an additional fee waiver policy, it'd be our recommendation pursuant to that policy that their existing invoices are paid
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thank you very much for your time. I'm going to try to get this done in two minutes because I know that's what I have, but I want to I want to just provide some background and history of how we got to where we are.
and caught up to current and and could be retroactively applied if the council were to consider something in the future, but our current policy would require
Just so you have the the context of how how we are where we are. So
that be paid. And on the question about the revenue and Ken offered to have a a behind the scene meeting,
I there was a desk item that kind of explained where we were, and the agenda really covers Oktoberfest. Our intention since Oktoberfest in 2019 has been to come back and ask for additional relief.
the policy does require profit and loss calculation to be provided. And if we get to that point, we can talk about how we can maybe arrange that outside of a public meeting for that to happen.
We just haven't had a chance to do it in the form that made sense. So whether you whether you talk about that tonight or not, the information I have on here is relevant to
Okay, so so Ken, let me ask you one question then. So we're not discussing Boogie, except to the fact that that open invoice affects what we can do with Oktoberfest.
the reason we're going to go back and ask for more. Four things really impacted us. The Gilroy Garlic Festival made everyone look at how they handle security at events, and I'll talk about two things
I know you want you want to come back potentially to lower that amount, which can always be discussed in the future or retroactively. Is there a reason that hasn't been paid, which paves the way to look at Oktoberfest?
that impacted us for that as it relates to that. And being very clear that we would never encourage tell the police department how how many they should have or what they should do. Yeah, so the reason is, much like the other three before it that we ended up turning out, was was looking at a future of a reduction in those as well. The second item that impacted us significantly was the full cost recovery model that the that the city council implemented, I believe in 2019. So I I didn't want to, you know, if we can do that Obviously, we are affected by COVID, and then the parklets in the downtown area. in in before Oktoberfest, and and that's something that you're open to and look at, look at, it's possible that that could be. So let me talk about headcount per day, just to give you an example. So the blue line represents Gilroy. It'll reduce our note enough that I could put Boogie in there, and we'd still be right on where we are today. Before Gilroy, we averaged 16 officers a day at a festival. At the Boogie Festival last year, we had 26 on Saturday and 22 on Sunday.
Okay, any other questions for Ken? Don't see you. Thank you. Is anybody else that wants to speak on this item?
So that's an increase, at least just in personnel.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, close the public hearing, and bring it back for a discussion.
And you can see sort of how it charts out on the presentation, an increase every year since since Gilroy. Along with that, if you look at the number of hours worked pre-Gilroy with that blue line,
Councilmember Gibbons?
man man hours were
I don't have my light on, but I'll I'll.
Thank you.
132 and 138, and the last festival we had was 181 and 203. So not only a significant
So I'll try the simple things first. I think that we're being asked for two things tonight, which is in the granting of the permit
a slight increase in headcount, but definitely an increase in man hours worked, which impacted us.
for a special event, we're being asked to provide a 50% reduction in the fee as opposed to 25%.
The next item I want to talk about is the full cost recovery. So on this slide here, you'll see
And the second thing is talking about extending it for a five-year period. So I I'm open to doing the 50% reduction for two years. I'd like to see us move forward with a two-year solution, not a five-year solution. So I'm amenable to the 50% solution for two years. The challenge, I believe, that remains for council is what action we can take to address the criteria of our policy, which talks about funds in arrears. And I'm speaking specifically about the Boogie dues, not the fees that the city and the chamber have reached agreement on. So I'm open to discussion.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you want to?
So I I understand the 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 purpose and and the importance of having community events in downtown and the city supporting that. And we do have a policy on the books that provides for 25% waiver fees. And and the intent of that policy is to help organizations where there is a community event and community benefit. And with what what's before us tonight with the 50% fee waiver, I don't feel that the application is complete in that the chamber, part of the part of the application process requires the chamber to provide a profit and loss statement. So I I I'm trying to understand the what what the justification is to to increase from 25 to 50% fee waiver. Because that information isn't available, hasn't been provided to the city, and without that, it's very challenging to say, oh, yeah, let's give them a fee waiver. Because, you know, it's a great community event. And the second part of it is that their in arrears for the the Boogie on the Bayou, which recently occurred, and in order to issue a permit per our policy, those two things need to be part of the application process. That there's there shouldn't be outstanding debt, and that the organization should should be providing financial information. And it, to me, it doesn't have to be detailed information and but but an overview of what what's what the profit is, what the expenditures are, and and why the organization is is requiring a greater than 25% fee waiver. And as far as the request to do a multi-year agreement, I I would not agree to that or support that. I think it's important, given what's occurred in the last couple of years, that it be handled on it on a year-by-year basis. And if if they, the the chamber or any organization wants a greater than 25% fee waiver, then they should come to council and explain that and demonstrate the need for it, and not just, oh, we want to, we want a 50% fee waiver. And I I want to speak a little bit about the public safety costs. I mean, we keep getting compare, this festival keeps getting compared to Gilroy, but let's face it, the the times in our lives have changed. With pandemic, with other mass shootings, it's not just Gilroy, and it it takes a lot of public safety personnel to protect the city, not only for all the thousands of people that are coming into the the festival, but also the residents that live here that may require some emergency services. And there's a price that has to be paid for that, regardless of whether you like it or not. And so to to leave the city vulnerable or to to argue, well, the the public safety costs are are, you know, out of line, I I just, I don't support that, and I think that we need to be sure that our city is protected.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
So a lot of good comments. I I want to offer up one correction based off what I understand, which is that what has been requested is 50% or a cap of 25%, which if we're going, and and I thank the chief for his explanation, because I I I didn't get this until I had the full explanation. If we're going off the 65,000 previous costs, that would be a 61.5% discount. But what we heard is it could be higher if if the costs are are higher. Because that that would be a discount of 40,000 out of the 65.
Could could I just ask a clarification, what you just said? They're asking for a 50% reduction or 25,000, not 25%?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I mean. No, thank you for for clarifying that the cap. So so just something to keep in mind for for this discussion. The the this is difficult because I I think we all see the value of of the chamber, of the the events, hands down. I know I do. Like others, I'm struggling a bit because I don't feel that I have full information. You know, the the vice mayor spoke to to the the costs of public safety and and the need for that. And to me, if you have increased costs, then you increase prices and fees.
Current festival. In in a good festival, we can make one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. But that hasn't happened since October Fest of two thousand twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks Ken.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lopez.
Brian, you can, Brian, stop me if if this this gets in on an agenda, you know, and open to later discussion. Are we, and and Brian, this may be for you or for Ken, but are we on some kind of installment or payment plan? Has there been an agreement reached there? For for what is owed?
Yeah, so there's a promissory note that the chamber signed for the past events. That where those invoices have been unpaid. That does not include the two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two Boogie event that just happened. That was invoiced for forty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, and Brian, one more question before before, see if anybody else wants to speak in the public. So if there's money owed for the prior event, how does that impact what we can do with the current event?
There's a good question, and for clarity purposes, our special events fee waiver policy that's in place now, our current policy does require that there's no past due amounts owed to the city to recognize that. If the chamber wants to take advantage of the that fee waiver request, the fee waiver policy that's in place now, or an additional fee waiver policy, it'd be our recommendation pursuant to that policy that their existing invoices are paid and caught up to current and and could be retroactively applied if the council were to consider something in the future, but our current policy would require that be paid. And on the question about the revenue and Ken offered to have a a behind the scene meeting, the policy does require profit and loss calculation to be provided. And if we get to that point, we can talk about how we can maybe arrange that outside of a a public meeting for that to happen.
Okay, so so Ken, let me ask you one question then. So we're not discussing Boogie except to the fact that that open invoice affects what we can do with Oktoberfest. I don't you want you want to come back potentially to lower that amount, which can always be discussed in the future or retroactively? Is there a reason that hasn't been paid, which paves the way to look at Oktoberfest?
Yeah, so the reason is much like the other three before it that we ended up turning out was was looking at a future of a reduction in those as well. So I I didn't want to, you know, if we can do that in in before Oktoberfest and and that's something that you're open to and look at, look at, it's possible that that could be. It'll reduce our note enough that I could put Boogie in there and we'd still be right on where we are today.
Okay, any other questions for Ken? Don't see you. Thank you. Is anybody else that wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, close the public hearing and bring it back for a discussion. Comment? Councilmember Gibbons?
I don't have my light on, but I'll I'll go for it. So I'll try the simple things first. I think that we're being asked for two things tonight, which is in the granting of the permit for a special event. We're being asked to provide a fifty percent reduction in the fee as opposed to twenty-five percent. And the second thing is talking about extending it for a five-year period. So I I'm open to doing the fifty percent reduction for two years. I'd like to see us move forward with a two-year solution, not a five-year solution. So I'm amenable to the fifty percent solution for two years. The challenge, I believe, that remains for council is what action we can take to address the criteria of our policy, which talks about funds in arrears. And I'm speaking specifically about the Boogie dues, not the fees that the city and the chamber have reached agreement on. So I'm open to discussion.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you want to?
So I I understand the 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 purpose and and the importance of having community events in downtown and the city supporting that. And we do have a policy on the books that provides for twenty-five percent waiver fees. And and the intent of that policy is to help organizations where there is a community event and community benefit. And with what what's before us tonight with the fifty percent fee waiver, I don't feel that the application is complete in that the chamber, part of the part of the application process requires the chamber to provide a profit and loss statement. So I I I'm trying to understand the what what the justification is to to increase from twenty-five to fifty percent fee waiver. Because that information isn't available, hasn't been provided to the city. And without that, it's very challenging to say, oh, yeah, let's give them a fee waiver. Because, you know, it's a great community event. And the second part of it is that they're in arrears for the the Boogie on the Bayou, which recently occurred. And in order to issue a permit per our policy, those two things need to be part of the application process, that there's there shouldn't be outstanding debt and that the organization should should be providing financial information. And it, to me, it doesn't have to be detailed information and but but an overview of what what's what the profit is, what the expenditures are, and and why the organization is is requiring a greater than twenty-five percent fee waiver. And as far as the request to do a multi-year agreement, I I would not agree to that or or support that. I think it's important, given what's occurred in the last couple of years, that it be handled on it on a year-by-year basis. And if if they, the the chamber or any organization wants a greater than twenty-five percent fee waiver, then they should come to council and explain that and demonstrate the need for it and not just, oh, we want to, we want a fifty percent fee waiver. And I I want to speak a little bit about the public safety costs. I I mean, we keep getting compare, this festival keeps getting compared to Gilroy, but let's face it, the the times in our lives have changed. With pandemic, with other mass shootings, it's not just Gilroy. And it it takes a lot of public safety personnel to protect the city, not only for all the thousands of people that are coming into the the festival, but also the residents that live here that may require some emergency services. And there's a price that has to be paid for that, regardless of whether you like it or not. And so to to leave the city vulnerable or to to argue, well, the the public safety costs are are, you know, out of line, I I just, I don't support that. And I think that we need to be sure that our city is protected.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
So a lot of good comments. I I want to offer up one correction based off what I understand, which is that what has been requested is fifty percent or a cap of twenty-five percent, which if we're going, and and I thank the chief for his explanation, because I I I didn't get this until I had the full explanation. If we're going off the sixty-five thousand previous cost, that would be a sixty-one point five percent discount. But what we heard is it could be higher if if the costs are are higher. Because that that would be a discount of forty thousand out of the sixty-five.
Could could I just ask a clarification of what you just said? They're asking for a fifty percent reduction or twenty-five thousand, not twenty-five percent?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I mean.
The math is right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No, thank you for for clarifying that the cap. So so just something to keep in mind for for this discussion. The the this is difficult, because I I think we all see the value of of the chamber, of the the events, hands down. I know I do. Like others, I'm struggling a bit because I don't feel that I have full information. You know, the the vice mayor spoke to to the the costs of public safety and and the need for that. And to me, if you have increased costs, then you increase prices and and fees to offset that. And I just don't have enough information to know whether some of that that has occurred. And that always has trade-offs and and may involve some some tough decisions. But I I need more information to to see what what's been done there. It it I'm also struggling with with the fact that we, you know, I'm glad to hear that the promissory note has been signed, but that that we haven't had any payments, as far as I understand, on on the outstanding debt is is a challenge to me. And to to me, I I know I, you know, I'd want to find a solution and and work together to 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 come to that. But and and maybe I just have incomplete information, but I'm I'm not I'm I'm not sure that that I see that just based off of of what I'm hearing. I'd I'd be open to some kind of discount. I I personally would be open to some kind of multi-year agreement. And we're we're limited in in this case to to just talking about Oktoberfest. So I, you know, I'm I'm open to some of that, but I I just think for for the the a larger discussion, there's a lot of information that that I'm missing here.
Councilmember Landry?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ken, also for your presentation. We have a policy out at the athletic fields where we subsidize the fees paid by our soccer field and field users because we've established that that's to the betterment of the community and there's a big public benefit. Which I don't necessarily agree with, but we do have that policy for what we're doing out there. So on that vein, this is a public benefit. It helps the city. It helps downtown. It helps bring people to Campbell. So from that perspective, if we're going to give a discount over here, then we should be giving a discount to something like this. What the percentage is needs to be determined. I think we do need the financial. I did ask that question. It's hard for me to say, oh, well, we'll cut it down to twenty-five and you make three hundred thousand dollars. Then you're shaking your head no, but we don't, I don't know. It's nebulous at this point, which other members have stated. And this whole thing of what we're in the rears. So I don't support a five-year. I would support, say, a two-year. But then something about CPI or inflation, which we're going to have to absorb with our expenses, with labor and all that. We do need to be, and we are in times now that are completely we need a lot as much protection as we can. So I just, can we just approve the use permit? Or do we want to get everything through the use permit? Because that's part of this today is the use permit.
That's up to us to decide.
So we could separate them out.
That's up, that's up to us to decide.
Okay.
We have the option.
So I would support approving the use permit, but not supporting the fee reduction until we get more information. Saying that, I do think we need to give a fee reduction of some kind. And if it goes all the way down to fifty, then so be it. But I want to see the P and L.
And my comments, I I just don't think we have total information that we need to decide this. So let me just make some comments. I don't see how we operate with a no cap, just because we have no idea what the costs are going to be. So that's that's problematic to say X percent, but a max will pay because as Councilor Lopez pointed out, it could be sixty-one and a half percent, it could be seventy-five percent. No discount, but we can't go to the next step unless we change the policy. I'm inclined to go, obviously, twenty-five percent, maybe more. The the problem is, we 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 just don't know enough. So what I'd like, I'd like to stay at a year, because here here's the problem. If we give a bigger discount, we're doing this partially to help the chamber. That situation can change year to year, because four years ago, if we're making two hundred thousand, it doesn't matter anymore. We're doing this partially, perhaps based by looking at the P and L, which we haven't seen yet, and the city has to see, and I appreciate Ken. The confidentiality of it, putting a closed session, it can be done with with staff. And part is related to the city costs. We need to know what the costs are before we give them just some blanket percentage. So I I don't know, without seeing the P and L, without understanding that Boogie can be paid by a certain date before Oktoberfest, how we offer the discount today. I certainly am okay with giving a use permit, because I want to see the event. But I think until we get this other information, specifically P and L, I don't, I don't think we can go beyond twenty-five percent. And reality is, if we don't have a commitment to pay Boogie with a certain deadline, we can't really even offer that unless this council wants to change the policy. And that's a whole other discussion. So I'm okay with doing the use permit. But then staff has to set a deadline here to meet, to get to look at the P and L and to and to understand how Boogie is going to be paid. If there's a potential in the future that you're coming back and book to to get a reduction in what's over Boogie, which we can do in the future retroactively, it still would require, I think, paying what's due now. But then any portion that got reduced could always be applied to Oktoberfest. So it can even out, right? Just, we just got to figure out the timing and I, we gotta lean on staff to do that. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't I don't know how we go beyond the user permit, the use permit tonight. Councilmember Lopez?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Thank you. So I will offer some some information. So I was vice mayor in twenty with Mayor Landry when COVID hit. And then I was mayor all of last year in twenty twenty-one. And during my term as mayor, I did spend a fair bit of time with the chamber. We worked quite closely on the whole issue of the parklets, the businesses. And at the time, in twenty twenty-one, Ken shared with me information about the finances of the chamber. I've kept it confidential, because that's how it was intended. So I have a perspective of what their financial situation has been for the last basically two years. And that's why, although I agree completely that we do not have the detailed information that is identified in the policy about why there should be a cost reduction. I'm okay with the fifty percent reduction for this year and two events next next year. Because I, it is my understanding of the chamber situation that they need some simplicity and confidence going forward. Not to say that that's not requiring them to provide the missing information in that regard. The only reason, yeah, so I'm okay with the fifty percent, because I know over a year and a half, two years worth of conversation, how tough it's been. Two, I'm okay with the two years to give them a chance to get their act back together. Three, I actually think Ken was very clear. He was not at all complaining about the amount of PD services. He was totally supportive of PD doing what they felt was necessary. And I I was pleased that he was very supportive of the fact that it's PD's call on how to protect, as Vice Mayor Bybee said, how to protect visitors, but also our residents. So I thought that was a a good point. So the problem for me I going forward, we can give the permit, but the question is the policy on paying the arrears for Boogie. And I do think that and correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think the council does have the opportunity and the dialogue this evening to issue a variance that says that the payment for the Boogie can be handled either of two ways. One, it gets incorporated into the existing financial agreement. Or it gets paid. Now, that's probably what I guess what I would say is, but we do have, I'm asking, the authority to issue a variance to our policy, which would allow them to meld that money into the existing agreement to bring them up to a payment schedule for all funds owed. So I just offer those additional pieces.
Councilmember Lopez?
So, Councilmember Gibbons, I'll get to the the question of the policy change in a minute, but but I think I agree with pretty much everything you said and would be open to that. Difference being, you you know, I don't necessarily have that financial insight. And and so that's still a a question for me. But certainly with with your analysis of of the situation. I I just as, you know, to maybe try to get get to consensus or or not consensus, but finding areas of agreement. Certainly open to to the the use permit for tonight. I I think just the issue there is that clearly the chamber is looking for for clarity to to let them move forward, where it concerns me that we're getting close to the event. That's that's not necessarily on on the the council, but it's it's just challenging. I I think they need some 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 kind of clarity. And so just within the timeframe that that we have, I'm a little bit challenged with with how to move forward there. I'm, I I I wouldn't be open to to the twenty-five thousand, not knowing what our costs are are going to be in the in the future, but open to to some kind of a a percentage cap, as as was mentioned. And then I just wanted to get clarity on on the question of the policy change bill, is like, could we do a variance? Would we have to go back and change the policy just for my own benefit?
It is a council policy, and the council has authority to deviate from its own policies.
Doesn't it need to be agendized, though, as a deviation of the policy?
If you are were to change the policy itself, yes. But to deviate specifically for this event, you could do that tonight.
So that's like what Liz said, is a variance to the use the use permit?
Yes, correct.
Vice Mayor, Bobby?
So just to follow up on a couple of the comments, I I certainly support the chamber and and the and the Boogie and the Oktoberfest, and I'm not trying to impede it. But again, I I don't feel that I have information, sufficient information, sufficient financial information. Councilmember Gibbons, you may have that information, but I, as an individual council member, I don't. So I'm, I just cannot justify a a fee waiver or an increase in a fee waiver, because the chamber is asking for it without some proof or documentation that the chamber provides to the city. And and it and it, it's again, part of the part of the application process. So if we can postpone it for two weeks until we get that information, I I would be amenable to that. I I just don't think that we should be, I I I would agree to issuing the special event permit with the condition that they provide that information and to the city's satisfaction, as well as the money that's in arrears.
I I'll agree with that. I mean, I I think we don't have enough information. I can't go on financials that were from last year prior to the last Boogie. No, whether I need to see them or see them through the city manager and director finance eyes, that's fine. But I'd like to see that if I'm going to go from twenty-five to fifty. I still would say, I I'd stick with one year. It's not that hard to come back here and do this again. Situations change. It's 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 taxpayer money, and we should do this based on the most recent performance. The last thing is, we can do a variance. Here's the problem with just dumping the debt into into this other note. You know, if if you don't dump it into the first note, then the two festivals together, that could be over a hundred thousand dollar debt. So so how is that paid? If you do dump it into the three-year note, that's got to increase the the monthly payment, obviously, to get that paid, unless we're talking about extending it out. I think that I wasn't involved in the agreement to do a three-year, but that was based on, I think, some reasonable amount of payback to the city, but also something that the chamber could could afford cash flow wise. So if we did dump something into that, I'm sure we have to come up with a timeframe, amount, amount of a payment. I'm sure the chamber probably has a board approval on your side to do that and all that. I don't think we do that tonight. I don't know how you do that and just say, yeah, we could throw it in there and make that work. It may or may not work. I would like to say for certain, I want to submit the or approve the use permit. Certainly, if we can resolve the the issue with Boogie one way or another, then twenty-five percent minimum. And maybe more, but I want to see the financials first. And we and we could bring this back in two weeks to do that, I think, correct? I mean, we certainly have, we certainly give a message, we want this thing to go on. But but I don't know that we can decide on the fee for doing so tonight.
So.
That is correct. If there there, I heard a question there is, do we have enough time to do that?
We do this in two weeks. If this requires, this requires a few things. It requires somebody looking at the financials and making an assessment. It requires perhaps an assessment of, could you roll that debt into the into the three-year payment? If that's desired, what would that cost in payments? And does the chamber agree with that? Or could they pay that amount? I guess the fourth or or third or would be, or are we comfortable going to a hundred thousand dollars of outstanding debt separate from that first debt? That's that's a decision we have to make, too.
Well, we can have the discussions and bring that back in two weeks to the council, assuming that those conversations can be had.
There's at least four options there of of how you handle the past due payments. That council.
So I was going to offer a motion and see if I can do this, subject to discussion. So could we have, could I make a motion that says, for this evening, for the purposes of moving this forward, we would authorize a twenty-five percent fee reduction with condition for a one-year period? With the condition to modify for the with a condition for the chamber to provide additional financial information that would modify the financial agreement for paying back the full amount of what they owe. However, the chamber and the city manager can agree to, there would be an agreement on how to pay that the money's arrears. They would come back with that proposal. And subject to the financial documentation, a fifty percent reduction in the fees would be acceptable. I'm okay not doing a cap at this point. I'm just saying, we go forward with the policy at twenty-five percent. We allow the a policy to be modified for this particular situation to have the chamber and the city come to an agreement on how to pay the arrears amounts in whatever fashion the city and the chamber come to. And three, subject to some financial confidential financial documentation shared by the city, the city manager and the city financial officer would concur with a up to a fifty percent fee reduction for a one-year time period.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lopez, you have a comment?
I appreciate the motion being put forward constructively. I had a clarification question be before we we go to that. Would we be able to bring this back as a closed session item? And in two weeks?
It wouldn't be an executive session item, because it hasn't, it doesn't have the justifications to not be a public meeting. When we talk about a closed door, it may be a closed-door meeting, but it's not a technically a closed session of the council. It may be a meeting of the chamber, me, the finance director, perhaps the mayor, but it wouldn't be a closed executive session like we would have for labor discussions or personnel decisions.
I I'm I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that whatever we put forward has to work for for the the chamber as well, or else where, you you know, we're back where we started. I I appreciate that.
So do you want a second effort discussion or?
Sure, I'll do that second.
Councilmember Andrew?
Yeah, you added a lot of extra words in there in your description versus just the motion. So the motion is to grant the use permit to grant a minimum of twenty-five percent reduction in the fee to request the financial information, P and L, whatever, financial information, and then
For the purposes of reducing the fee to fifty percent?
Max, up to fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
Not this, whatever's less.
No, no, just straight fifty percent.
So those are the four elements of the
One-year term.
Five elements. So those are the five.
And that's one more, which is the And that's one more, which is the um, the money coming in, the, the money currently owed for the Boogie is uh, has a financial agreement with the city on payment.
They do have a financial agreement.
Not for the Boogie.
It's a different debt.
It's a different amount.
Okay, I thought you already had the um.
Just, just to clarify, there's been several events. Um, the, all the past events that were unpaid, with the exception of this year's Boogie have been secured with a promissory note. The promissory note was executed before this year's Boogie. They've now been invoiced for the Boogie on top of the promissory note.
Okay, because that's this distinction I was trying to make.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
And uh, would that come back to council then in two weeks for approval if? How, however, uh.
For the, for the, for the, for the additional, up to fifty percent. Be waiver? If that's what council prefers, I was suggesting that the city manager and the finance director could meet with uh, the chamber. Um, and be able to make a confidential analysis and make a recommendation to the council about that reduction.
Okay.
So that answer the question if it's coming back?
Yeah, and I, I would suggest just a little bit different wording. I, I would suggest that there be a use permit issued at a twenty-five percent discount based on a mutually acceptable resolution with the city and the chamber of the Boogie debt. So we're not saying whether you roll it into the first one or you do it separately. We don't know. That's how I'm going to put on staff. Um, with a review, a, a further review of the discount based on the P and L review. So staff can make a recommendation and actually what I thought was um, to bring that with a deadline, to bring that back before council on September thirteenth, because we're going to run out of time otherwise. We have to put some urgency on it. So it puts urgency on both sides to, to have something doable. Because after that, we're talking October sixth or something like that. It's just.
Just clarify that, I think you said September thirteenth. I think you meant September twentieth.
I mean, the twentieth.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. For one-year period. So basically it's a, it's a twenty-five percent discount based on a mutually acceptable resolution of, of the Boogie debt, whatever that is proposed to be. Um, a one-year term with a review, a review of the discount based on the city's review of the profit and loss and a deadline of bringing this back before the council with a recommendation from staff on nine-twenty. Is that, although I think that covers what everybody wanted.
You just had to use your own wording. I know.
Well, yeah, I, I think, I think the difference is, I, no, the only difference is, the big difference is the, the two things. To bring it back like the vice mayor said, but the other piece is that I don't know if it's appropriate to roll it into that first debt or to require some payment on the second debt, but that can certainly be proposed.
I was just giving you a hard time.
I'm just afraid if we don't, if we roll it in, it raises a payment. If we don't roll it in, it has a big debt. So um, is that, let me ask, would that be an acceptable friendly amendment? And would that be acceptable?
It is.
Uh, I'm sorry, just to clarify the terms used too, this is special events permit. We're referring to it as a use permit is technically a special events permit is the correct reference.
Bill, you look like you had something to say at some point, did?
I, I think uh, the proposed amendments took care of my concerns.
Okay, great.
So is there other, other comments or?
Uh, I, I just want to reiterate how much we support the chamber, at least I know I personally do. And like I said, we've granted requests for not cost recovery to other, like the athletic program because there's a public benefit. To me, this is even a bigger public benefit. And so it behooves us to come to this resolution and not only show support for the chamber, but for Campbell and for events that we have in downtown, which makes us more lively.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
And I completely concur with that, but again, it's public money and we need to be um, assured that what we're doing is um, warranted and, and um, needed to, to support a community organization to be successful. And that's my bottom line. It's not that I'm opposed to the chamber. I think it's a great event. I volunteer. I support the chamber in many ways. So um, I, I hope that my comments are not taken derogatorily, but um, I do support the event.
Agreed. So we have a motion with, with the friendly amendment seconded by council member given seconded with friendly amendment by council member Lopez. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Hi.
Mayor Resnikov?
Hi, so that's, okay, so hopefully we'll resolve all this within the next two weeks, I hope. Um, we move to unfinished business. There is none. We move to council committee reports. Um, who would like to start? Councilmember Andrew?
I'll start, thank you. Um, so the recycling and waste reduction committee could not get a quorum, so we couldn't meet. But we had to approve a budget or something, so we have to have a special meeting here shortly. Uh, we had an education subcommittee meeting today at four o'clock. Uh, we've been following up on providing wifi assistance and wifi for around the Rosemary area uh, for um, helping out the kids in that area. And we discussed um, the state or feds looking at um, all section eight housing should be providing wifi or internet. And we talked about a collaborative letter from the school boards and the city uh, to our local representatives to put that on to the, hopefully a bill before the house. Um, I attended the chamber's um, Desi Grand, Ground Open, no, not groundbreaking ceremony for their three years in business. They opened right before COVID and didn't get to celebrate too much during COVID, so they had their very nice three-year event um, on Thursday. And then a week ago Friday, I attended the water, let's see, what are we calling them now? Valley Water Water Summit at the Santa Clara Convention Center. I think they had a speaker every ten minutes for several hours. And the one thing that came out of that was there is water rebate money for municipal agencies up to a hundred thousand dollars to take out lawn. So I presented that to Brian and he's looking into if we can shut off some more of our lawn and get a hundred thousand dollars to uh, offsets. I think some plants have to go back in, but definitely not as much for water requirement.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I'll go. We had a uh, a meeting of the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Audit Committee and accepted the uh, audit report. Um, had a, another meeting of the uh, ad hoc committee to choose the new uh, director for the Bay Area Quality uh, Management District. So continues to be a very intensive uh, process with, with some uh, very specific and technical uh, requirements for, for that position. Um, and um, was uh, uh, voted the uh, Santa Clara County at-large representative for the League of Cities Peninsula Division. So when we go to the, the conference, I'll be officially sworn in.
Okay, that's what we're given.
Okay, I'm having machine meltdown here. I'm going to try. All my notes are on the machine here.
Vice Mayor, did you want to go in the meantime or?
Yeah, if you would, I, sure, I have a real quick report. I don't have anything to report.
Okay, that's good. And I, I'll report quickly too, which would give you another ten seconds. Um, I actually had two, two meetings, the two board reads of West Valley Clean Water JPA, West Valley Solid Waste JPA, where we're on the solid waste, where we're in the midst of looking at the um, contract renewals or an RFP for contract renewals for the um, the pickup and disposal. It's not for the recycling, but for the other ones. Councilmember Gibbons?
Okay, sorry. Uh, can I look at someone's screen for my committees? The, the whole thing has gone blank.
You can wing it.
I hate it when I made the time and effort to write it all down. Uh, okay, um, as Councilwoman Landry said, we had an education subcommittee. Um, very, very supportive group and I was focused. Did you mention that we're going to be looking to work with our elected officials at the state level on improvements for students wifi access who live in um, section eight housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, did I, I'm sorry, I was focusing on this, sorry. Um, very, very exciting and, and uh, discussion. Um, and we had a very good presentation um, from the library, um, our county librarian, Jennifer Weeks. The historical museum, I'll get there. Sorry. Okay, so the historical museum, um, in addition to the um, card and concepts that the ma- ma- mayor mentioned earlier. Um, there is information on the website about holidays at the Ainsley House. And this year will be the twenty-eighth year for the holidays at the Ainsley House with tours, teas and the holiday boutique photos with Santa and evening open houses. This year's theme is going to be holiday alphabet. Each room will be decorated using a different letter of the alphabet. If you're interested, please go on the campomuseums.com for more information. On October first, from ten to two PM, the Campbell museums will be at Numum, N-U-M-U-M, in Los Gatos for the Numum Family Fall Arts Day and National Diversity Day. There will be several local museums participating, offering crafts and family activities. Registrations can be found at the Los Gatos Recreation website. On October eighth, from five PM to seven PM, Ainsley House welcomes historian and author Barney Terrell to discuss his new book Cold Wrath about the ninth, of the eighteen ninety-six McGlinsey murders in Campbell. He used to give great tours in costumes, so some of you may be familiar with his work. And then Silicon Valley Clean Energy had um, many um, meetings to discuss. And staff has been working very, very um, closely with the Cal ISO Independent Services Office um, with the distribution of power over these last hot days. Thank you all to our Campbell residents who have worked so hard and the city, as you can see, to reduce our energy um, consumption. Thank you uh, very much. And I know I had a whole ton more. There was a um, joint venture presentation with uh, the Santa Fe Business Journal and Silicon Valley Clean Energy regarding um, the future of business and a climate change that was uh, attended by over a hundred people virtually. Uh, and very good information and feedback uh, was received uh, with that information. And I had one other uh, request this evening before we adjourned. Okay, uh, so I just would uh, offer that um, a, a lot of you know, I often bring up the topic of in-loofy. And one of the items that's on the work plan for the Community Development Department is a series of Nexus studies. And I would simply ask um, staff um, to consider when they bring that proposal forward to council to include a way of um, eliminating the uh, current in-loof fee, which is all of a dollar per square foot construction cost of thirty-two dollars, which we know it doesn't make sense. And its application is limited to um, projects of six un- less than six units an acre. But um, given that um, according to a table I looked at, I stumbled on the other day, which is what's bringing this to the fore for me, that the Avalon project has um, a large number of.
Excuse me if, for interrupting, I, is the, I, um, is uh, council member Gibbons, are you asking for this to be agendized for further discussion?
When it comes back with the staff report, yes. Is that asking too much?
It's um, I don't know that that's asking too much, but it
But we're getting into details on it.
One would normally give to ask for something to come back to the council.
So I, my, I'll try and simplify, which is the staff is doing um, Nexus studies in their work plan. And I will look forward to hearing how to handle in the interim, the in-loof fees.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and adjourn the regular, this uh, council meeting to the next regularly scheduled council meeting of Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you, everyone.